Everyone, thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. I call our meeting to order, and I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next portion of the meeting is our public comment section. This is part of the meeting is reserved for those people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized.
Dan?
Yes, sir.
You skipped over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, additions and changes, and I do know that we have one at least.
Yeah, so if I may, if the board will consider two, two changes. One, I would suggest that we add appointments and resignations under five. We can make it five A, and that would be to confirm the appointment of a new library director. And then, secondly, under the executive session, we already have it listed for land acquisition for St. Peter's property. The town planner is going to join us, and there's the parcel on Church Street. We have a proposal for a possible land swap. And then also on Abbey Drive, another parcel, which is a ghost road that gives us access between two properties into now the state-acquired open space. So we're looking to possibly eliminate that. So if we could discuss those two items under executive session as well as the St. Peter's property.
I have no issue with it. Does anyone else have an issue? Nope. Okay, good, good. Okay, sorry, thank you. Now for the public comment section. Well, I see we have Terry McManus. You had a question?
Just cancel.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a question on process. Why are we doing the discussions on the open space acquisitions in executive session? I was thinking that what you're going to do is come out and I attended a meeting last night on this, and I was looking forward to the discussion amongst the selectmen. I'm not really sure why you're doing it in the executive session. Why isn't it not an open session? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Normally, we don't get into answering questions, but I would say we usually always do any kind of land transfers in executive session. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just what it's always been. Andy?
Yeah, so it's a great question, Terry, and we try to use executive session very, very lightly, hardly at all. One of them is lands transactions. The Board of Selectmen has not even heard these proposals yet. So this is to be, to see if the Board of Select would even consider such a thing. So normally, we don't disclose, you know, amounts of money or that stuff is clearly for an executive session first, but if any action were to be taken, we'd come out and then take action. But because it's the first time the selectmen are even hearing about these things before we even want to put them on an agenda to take them to a special town meeting, they at least need to be discussed. And that's, this is a normal practice for land acquisition.
Okay, yeah, and Mr. Chair, then with that in mind, I wasn't planning on speaking this issue. I was planning on listening to it. So before you go into the executive session, I just want to speak on and against the purchase of the O'Connor property in that you wish to have this in the details in this in the executive session. I won't go into the details. I believe that the purchase of this property of well over a hundred acres goes against a lot of things that we need to look at. Taxpayers, expense, the closing up of land, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I won't go into details, but I wanted to let you know that as a citizen, I am opposed to the purchase of this property. And saying this now in case you make that decision in executive session, I wanted to let you know my feelings before that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments. Donna?
Lily Rhodes has a comment.
Okay.
It's probably, oh, Lily Rhodes, Slocum Road. Hebron has lots and lots of space available for development, all different kinds of development. And the open space land acquisition program is very planful, connecting migratory corridors, water courses, sensitive habitats, stuff like that. It's not done casually. There's a map, actually, there are several maps that can be reviewed to see how any particular land acquisition proposal or possibility fits into the master plan. So I have no idea, of course, what the details are of anything that's being considered. But I, I know the Land Acquisition Committee is, does a huge amount of research, and it's part of a master plan. And we have lots and lots and lots of space still available for development in Hebron. So that's all. Thanks.
Anyone else?
That looks like it for now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the area where I'd like to bring up the addition. I emailed out the information regarding this item earlier. So hopefully, all the selectmen will look at that. But at this time, under five A, I'm looking for confirmation of the appointment of the library director. At a thorough recruitment and interview process for the library director, the town manager is recommending the Board of Selectmen confirm his appointment for Drusella J. Drusella Carter as library director. Ms. Carter is here in attendance at the meeting. If you guys would like to talk to her, ask questions, and then we have a proposed motion we have up on the screen.
Okay. I was gonna say, what I'll do is I will read the motion, then we will let Ms. Carter introduce herself and maybe give us a little insight about her. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirm the town manager's appointment of J. Drusella Carter as library director effective September fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And welcome to the Hebron community. And I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to being part of the community in Hebron. I was most recently the director at the Pearl Crawford Memorial Library in Dudley, Massachusetts. But I was prior to that a director in Connecticut as well, so I'm excited to return to sort of the library community in Connecticut. I have a number of friends in Hebron, so I hear about how great the town is all the time. So I'm looking forward to getting to know the town and getting to know the library patrons and all of you.
Okay, I'll open it up to our, our board. Tiffany or Peter, any questions?
I have a question, well, a couple of questions and a comment. The first question I have was, Andy, under our current process, did the library board of trustees also have a hand in selecting the director? Or does that fall solely under your purview?
No, they were, they were heavily involved. Actually, I didn't get involved until the second interview.
Right, okay, thank you. And just a comment, you know, I think, I think town libraries increasingly more than ever are important spaces to maintain. I think they become a haven for people if, you know, we lose power, which tends to happen frequently. And it's also a haven of free expression and learning. And so I'm really excited that you've decided to join the community because I think that this role is increasingly important in today's environment. So thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm interested in your perspective of sort of the challenges and our opportunities faced by a library in a community such as ours, as you sort of think going forward, you know, what are the things that you are going to be thinking about or we should all be thinking about as a community with a, with a library? I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Well, I think the biggest challenge that is facing any library, and I'm sure you've heard about them, are the many challenges to materials in libraries and to the concept of libraries as a safe space for everyone. And that represents everyone in a community. And I think that's a real challenge, and of course, my professional ethics say that, you know, we fight, we fight to keep the library a space for everyone. As for opportunities, you know, the opportunities for libraries are endless. We can do so much in a community and, you know, I give you specifics, but I don't know Hebron particularly well yet. So I know what my friends have told me they want, but I'm not really sure that a pony at storytime is necessarily the highest priority for everyone else. One of my friends is eight, so, you know, she had opinions. But, you know, I, I think that the, there's a lot of opportunity for the library to reach out to different groups in the community and provide services and partnership with other organizations and, and really sort of spread the word that, that we are a space for the community and that we are a space for everyone in the community.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I would say getting a pony to want to go down the steps and then back up could be interesting.
I mean, I don't know. I asked her what, what I should do as the new director, and she said, get a pony. So, you know, I, I have to take these things into consideration, but I feel like there might be other priorities as well.
I do know, I was, I, I was working there actually a couple of weeks ago, and I was amazed the number of parents and small children that came for the movie time. Literally, it started out with like two people, like, oh, my Lord, that's it. And next thing you know is that room just filled up. It was, it was amazing. Like, oh, my word. So welcome aboard, all in favor of the appointment of Drusella Carter? Please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Did I see Mark on?
Yes.
Okay, Mark?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Parker Bear, aye. Good luck, Drusella.
Thank you.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Congratulations, and we look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, item number six, Town Manager's Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving right along. As you can just see, one, one thing came in front of the other, so one of my big things was working with the library directors and the board of directors for the library to do this appointment. So we had a couple rounds of interviews, and we were lucky to get this together and get her appointed today so we can get her started. So thank you. We had the bid openings for the Wall Street sidewalk. Again, we had those yesterday. We got two bids, so hopefully, we're working to analyze and come up with a decipher who's the low bidder and a recommendation from the engineers. Hopefully, we'll prevail this time. We're dealing with a delicate situation of a neighbor dispute down on Hope Valley Road, which involves a lot of the town services, emergency services. So we're working with the state and the judge approbate on that, so we're trying to rectify situations, taking quite a bit of time in our office. Also, we did interviews, and we are gonna have to go back out for a new Public Works employee. The first two candidates came in, and we offered the position. Fortunately, there's a lot of people looking to employ people, so they both, after a short stint, declined. So we're gonna go back out, doing a lot of interviews lately. We dismantled the skate park, so we're, we're pulling all that debris out of there. I sent pictures out today. I don't know if people had a chance to see those. So that should be cleaned up, and we'll get ready to start rebuilding that. I know that's been on some people's radar. The library roof is done, I'm happy to say, along with the pump stations. So those were two long-term projects that are completed, so we should feel good about both of those being completed. The gym floors are going well. One is surfaced and finished, the other one, they have the lines painted on it, but they have to put the urethane on it. They're hoping to wrap those up next week at Hebron Elementary School. And we're working to get that stamp, I'm sorry, steep grant application out. That's due at five o'clock on the eighteenth of this month. So our town planner has been crushing it, trying to get that out. We're also working on the Maple Fest. We've got a meeting set up for that moving forward. And then, of course, other ARPA projects. So we've been busy with that. And that's all I have.
Okay, could I just ask a question on the town and the highway department hiring? Is it, is it a question of money? Is that why they are not coming to Hebron?
So the number one pick went on vacation, so when he came back for, to get the job offer, another company that he had interviewed for, he didn't think that they were gonna call him, ended up calling him back. So he preferred that job over this one. So that was his explanation. The second person just sent me an email saying, thank you for the offer, but at this time, I'm, I'm gonna decline without really any indication of why he pulled out.
Okay, because I know it's, it's I was just working with an excavator who lost literally three people one day because he was saying there's gonna be a lot of overtime coming up, and two of the guys says, we don't want to do overtime, and got their cars and drove away. I, I don't understand what people are getting their money, but finding good employees is getting harder and harder, it seems. All right, thank you. Okay. Next, item seven, old business.
Yeah, so once again, we just kept this on the agenda. It's American Rescue Plan, local recovery, state and local recovery funds. We made some changes at the last meeting. ARPA report based on access taken by the Board of Selectmen at the August third, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Uncommitted revenues and ARPA funds total one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-three. So we wanted to update that after the changes that were made at the last meeting. And then that's up to you guys if you want to do anything else at this meeting.
My personal opinion is, until some of the other projects come in with finalized numbers, I, I, I just don't want to go out on a limb and all of a sudden find ourselves short. I don't know, does any of my other board members want to say anything or?
But just that I agree. I think those reserve funds need to be held, you know, for as long as possible because we have a lot that's currently in the pipeline. So I would agree, and I'm not really willing to consider myself personally at this point, any requests for new projects or anything that's still awaiting Board of Selectmen approval that's listed there. I think, I think we might be at our end depending on what comes in over budget and what, you know, and what completes and what we might need a little extra for.
Peter or Mark?
Yeah, I just had something. Oh, good, Mark. You want to go first?
Well, thanks, Peter. I'll be quick. I'm probably gonna agree with you too, but I agree with Tiffany and Dan. And I think we ought to be a little conservative at this point to make sure that we don't promise too much and we can't fulfill promises to certain projects. So I agree with what's been said.
Yeah, I agree as well, Mr. Chairman. I just was thinking, I don't want to, I don't want to hamstring Andy at all, but I'm just a little worried that, you know, the twenty percent latitude, you know, Andy continued to sort of communicate with us in real time because I'm uncomfortable that we're, we're clearly at the end, and a hundred plus thousand can go very quickly when some of these projects are pretty substantial. So just, I just ask you to continue to do what you're doing, which is to keep us posted. If you're, if we're starting to look at an overage, I don't want to wait for a Board of Selectmen meeting to find out, you know, we got another twenty thousand or thirty thousand on a project, and you've been doing great, Andy. I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, I think we even have to be more sensitive to any overages because that's not really much. So I agree, and we were sort of
Well, noted. I wouldn't, at this point, I wouldn't do anything, even though I have that latitude that was early on in the process. I wouldn't do anything without talking to you guys at this.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, just, we're, we're at the end, so thank you.
Okay. Next, Andy?
Okay, so item seven B is the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee update. At the last meeting, I think the Selectmen, we're gonna go back and study the comments and the summary, and they were gonna discuss it amongst themselves tonight. And then we'll quickly get that up onto the town website, hopefully tomorrow. So the Selectmen should discuss the executive summary and detailed results of the Public Works Building Project Survey to determine if anything further is required before taking action to have the results made available to the public.
Peter, since that was kind of your, your baby, you wanted to say anything first?
Oh, yeah, sure. So I think we're in a good spot to at least make it public. I don't, you know, we've already addressed the fact that we're keeping the names confidential and all that. So I think, you know, that was addressed and documented, so I think we're in a good spot there. Obviously, you know, the River East has published the results, you know, from the last meeting. So I think a lot of the, I mean, findings are out there, so that's good. And it just, I think, there's nothing, no reason to wait on that. So I think we should release that at, at which time, you know, however quickly Andy and his staff can get that out there. And I think the, for me, it's really next steps associated with obviously, there, there's a clear directive from the public, you know, those that complete the survey, that we should be exploring other options, and I think we should think about what that next step is tonight, which I would imagine would be engagement of the building committee. And obviously, I'll, I'll turn it over to Andy to provide some context on that because that's not my area of expertise. But I think maybe, Andy, if you could comment on that, because I, I feel that we should be talking about that. I, I want to take, I want to suggest any way that we consider moving forward with some action items, at least that are substantive enough to reflect to the public that we're listening and we're moving forward. So Andy, maybe before we open it up, could you maybe comment on, is that, does that make sense to talk about it like that?
Absolutely. So for clarity, you guys were given correspondence from the building committee to move forward with the facility on the Horton property. Now that we've taken action and did a survey, the survey results from however many people felt that out came back, and they want the town to explore other, other areas, including the old Colchester roadside. So I think two things would be appropriate, and this is a suggestion to the Selectmen to discuss and then approve. But one would be to go back to the building committee with the results from the survey and say, we're getting direction that we want to look at other options. The second suggestion I would make is because the property was purchased through a vote at a town meeting, I would, I would suggest that we reach out to the town attorney to see exactly how we move forward now that we're not going to use that parcel for the purpose it was intended and voted on. I think we should at least get a, a legal opinion on that.
Thank you, Andy. I think, I think that's spot on in terms of, I think, maybe where we should focus our discussion. There's so much, obviously, we could discuss, but I think releasing the information, if there's any comments, you know, and observations from what you guys read in terms of the seven hundred plus comments, and then thinking about those next critical steps to take and continue to demonstrate to the public that we're listening, but we're also proactively taking the necessary steps and communicating that accordingly and, and continuing to sort of control the narrative as we move forward on this important initiative.
Mark, Tiffany?
Do you want to go, Mark, or do you want me to go?
No, I'd like you to go, Tiffany, because I thought you were an integral part of the oversight of the survey to make sure that it was fair and unbiased. And Peter, a- as usual, you know, I can speak for myself and I think many others that we have great faith in you to always do things with the utmost integrity and comprehensiveness. So I haven't been as involved as you two have been in this. So I'm, I'm in support of what you guys have directed and decided.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I had the opportunity to sit and, and read the executive summary and the detailed results like we all did. And I do think it's critical to get that out to the public as soon as possible, you know, after we've removed all the publicly identifying information. You know, I, I think the results speak for themselves. I don't think we really need to rehash them. I think the only thing I would say in terms of action items is that I think that we all need to be a little more creative and a little bit more willing to compromise in terms of what we want for this facility and ensuring that it meets the basic needs of our employees, but understanding that if a majority of people who took this survey, who are likely to vote at a referendum, will approve this particular site over another. I think we need to work within those restraints and think creatively about how we can create something that will address those needs. So, and I think the only other note I would say about the Horton property is that it was always my understanding that the land was purchased to suit the potential for a variety of uses, not just a public works facility. So I think it's important that we discuss that as well because I've heard from a variety of different groups and individuals that there's opportunity with that land, right, in terms of what can we do to stimulate economic development? What can we do in terms of creating maker spaces and remote working arrangements where people can come in, rent an office for a day, be downtown? How can we, you know, think through what that property can look like? So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A couple of takeaways I got. First off, you know, people are talking that the current Public Works building is in disrepair. I take exception to that because I don't feel it is in disrepair. There are things that need to be addressed, but the maintenance and that upkeep of, of the main building has always been ongoing. You can't make a building bigger than it is. I've stated it before, there were a lot of, of changes that have come down the pipe that require things that that building just physically cannot have there. You know, so these are things that we have to, to address. The old building has always been known as the old building. It was a Butler building built, I'm gonna say, at least fifty years ago. So we, we do need to take steps moving forward. The property was purchased with the idea of development, so we need to figure out what best to handle that. So, yeah, well, there are a lot of things that we need to, to take into account. And people are saying that they couldn't get information, a few people. I don't know how they couldn't. It's been available on the website. All they had to do was call the town. They could have addressed any issue that people have. So people, I feel, need to actually get interested and, and place the phone calls to find out the information that they don't feel that they were given by whatever means they've been looking. You know, it's up to people to take the responsibility to find out facts. And so I'll be quiet at this. Okay.
Okay, so I think as a board, then, if I may, Mr. Chairman,
Yes, please.
I'm just thinking of my role here of this project. So with the three sort of next steps, and clearly, there's a lot, this is a huge list of next steps, but just for the three that I think we need to accomplish tonight, I, I think, is, or is anyone in disagreement with that release? I'll just take one at a time. The, the survey is released, you know, immediately, in quotes, in terms of when it can be, as soon as possible by, by the town. Is anyone in disagreement with that? Okay, so that, so we'll agree, that's, that's, you know, an act on line, and we're taking the next step on. I, I agree. Let me ask, is anyone disagreeing with having the, Andy follow up with the attorney? Just to understand sort of next steps and obligations associated with the Horton property, assuming, you know, we're clearly not exploring that at this juncture. So let's understand, sort of, again, a framework of potential next steps and things to consider there. I think, I think that's prudent to at least start understanding, you know, to Tiffany's point, you know, what, what are our options? You know, make sure everyone understands those, so that can be the basis for our continued discussions on that property. I'm, I'm comfortable at least, you know, saying that we should be supporting, gathering that additional information. uh, on that property. I'm, I'm comfortable at least, you know, saying that we should be supporting, gathering that additional information. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay. And then, um, um, then the next step, I think, if, and Andy jump in, if I missed something here is, is asking, uh, through, through Andy's office, the bill or us through Andy's office to get the building committee starting on the next steps of their assessment of the old Colchester Road property in terms of at least starting that next series of, of evaluations associated with that. Is that, is that, did I miss anything in sort of the three, at least initial next steps? Is there anything that we should be adding?
I think that's a great start.
Okay. So unless you, but just, let's do that. And then again, we don't want to bite off too much here. I think those are substantive and they're in the spirit of what we're hearing. Uh, and, and again, our continued interest in gathering as much information as possible and bringing that information out, uh, to the public. So I, I don't personally feel that we need to do more tonight on this topic because this isn't going to go, this is a regular topic. But I think that would be a good next step, unless someone wants to add anything.
I think, I think what you've said is, is perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, our next thing would be our, the charter revision.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, seventy charter revision. It's that time of year again. At the August third, two thousand and fifty Board of Select meeting agreed to move forward with charter revision. The second will take formal action to initiate the process at the September seventh meeting, which may, that date may change because we'll talk about that when we get to the agenda. Um, so it will be the following meeting if the board decides to cancel that meeting around the Hebrew Fair, which has always been past practice. So at the time we typed this up, I couldn't remember that. Uh, the segment may wish to discuss the composition of the Charter Revision Commission and begin to gather suggestions for the list of items to be considered by the Charter Revision Commission. The town manager is recommending a, a seven-member Charter Revision Commission at this time, and it's a recommendation. Uh, attached is a list of items identified thus far to be considered, and we would ask any selectmen to have anything else they want to add to please get that to us. And then we would solicit our department heads um, and boards and commissions, if anything in the charter has been affecting them to send those in to be considered as well. So the items identified to be included for review thus far is again, the town clerk's position, whether it be elected versus appointed. That would be section two oh three C and eight oh three A. Secondly, review percentage of grant match required special town meeting approval section three oh three G. That's a percentage of the total budget. Sometimes it hampers um, some operations. So that should be revisited. Section four oh six, uh, public emergencies and sections of four oh seven emergency ordinances. Do we need to address, uh, time limits? When this was originally put into the existing charters, we weren't looking at pandemics that lasted twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months. It was more of a inclement weather or hurricane or snow, uh, you know, blizzard type situation where it was, you know, a week at a time. So we may need to revisit that. Um, appointment town board section seven oh six addition, uh, addition of poet laureate, Lariat, addition of housing choices advisory committee, and then also bifurcation of town and local board of education budget section nine oh three.
Yeah, um, if I may, these are, these are lists that we're putting together. Uh, just be cognizant of the fact that once the committee is formed, they do have the right to basically review the entire, uh, charter and then bring back to our approval, um, you know, their, their changes. And we can take action on all of them or none of them, uh, but the advantage of having seven people is that when you had nine, it sometimes got difficult to get everybody together at the same time, you know, so there becomes some logistics issues when you have a committee that's too big. Um, what Andy was talking about on the September seventh meeting is we have historically always, because of the Hebrew Harvest Fair, uh, canceled that meeting. So that would push that back, uh, and Donna was actually going to work on that timeframe. But it basically pushed it back, you know, a meeting or, or two. I don't know. Donna, do you want to talk on that at all? Or Andy?
I'll leave it to Donna if she's here.
I, I don't have the revised timeframe for us tonight, but I think we looked at moving it out until, um, making or initiating the process at the, um, October fifth meeting. So moving it out one month. And then we would be making the appointment of the Charter Revision Commission at the November second meeting. So we just move everything out one month.
Yeah. So.
And we're already receiving, you know, letters of interest. So I think that, you know, we, we can definitely talk up the fact that we're going to start this process and people can start submitting their interest. We don't have to wait until the initiation, but once we take the action, um, we have to start counting the thirty days at that time. So, and in the past, we did have a little bit of trouble getting, you know, the adequate number of people. So this gives us a little bit more time to do that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So does that sound okay with everyone? Uh, Tiffany, I see your.
Yeah, it sounds fine to me. I just, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't make a couple of quick points. Um, first, I do have Andy several items that I want added to this list that I'll email to you specifically. I want the Green Committee under consideration under section seven oh six to be added. Um, but curiously, why is the town clerk position elected versus appointed matter coming up again? I seem to recall that was defeated pretty handily at referendum. And so I'm just curious why we would review it again when the last time it went out to vote, it went down easily three to one. I'm just curious why we would go down that.
Because I asked for it to be put on again.
Okay.
And, and just to soften that answer up after, after,
Okay.
after what happened, um, and having conversations with Carla, then Carla decided she was going to retire. And a lot of the things because she was elected and not an actual uh, town employee, there were some, some issues with benefits and stuff there that we, we had to work through. So it was, it was a little bit cognizant. And then now Fran, Fran, that's in there as acting town clerk. She would have to run. There's no guarantee that she's going to get the position. And she's very, you know, very qualified and doing a good job. So I, I would go back to her and, and, and see what she has to say about it. But I know Carla was the one that was instrumental and thought it should stay elected. But then I think after that happened, she kind of saw the rationale and the reasoning behind why we're trying to change it. So we could go back to the people that are doing the job now and get their input. I would think the Charter Vision Commission would do that anyways.
Yeah, I, I, I frankly, with no disrespect, when there are higher priorities for the Charter of Living Commission to consider, particularly when it comes to bifurcation. Um, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, uh, Mark.
Yeah, as I recall, the, the main reason why we kept it elected, uh, as an elected position was, was because of Carla herself, that we, we thought it was unfair to change anything at that time, based on her service and based on the faith and the community had in her and her experience. But, but I, I think going forward, I agree with Dan that I think it should be an appointed position, or else we don't have any continuity. We don't have expertise that we can count on. And you elect somebody and they have to learn the job over again. And I, I don't see that as, uh, being a prudent thing to do in today's world. And I agree with, uh, Tiffany, that, uh, bifurcation is important, uh, not to minimize some of the other ones, but those are my feelings.
Um, Peter?
Well, like, actually, I agree, I agree with Nora and, and, and I think, Tiffany, I think, um, my, my position really isn't any different, although I agree with you that we elected, you're appointed. I think that should absolutely at least be talked about. I, I was always confused when I was elected, when it was a town position. And as Mark said, uh, I mean, you could get the wrong person in the office, who doesn't have experience simply by their effectiveness and being able to run, which I think for an important town position like that would not be very prudent. So I'm interested in the commission's review of that as well. Thank you.
And then the other thing I would add on that is the amount of knowledge that that position now requires that that individual know. Uh, and this is by, by state laws, the things that the town clerk is responsible for to elect somebody and then expect them to be able to, uh, fulfill that, that their job duties as required by the state, uh, especially without a lot of background knowledge on that position. I think it just opens us up for, to too many, um, potential misses, um, and potential lawsuits. Uh, so it just, to me, makes sense that that be an elected position. Uh, and that way, it, it, we can make sure that people are adequately trained, qualified. As for the, uh, bifurcation, there is apparently a great amount of information.
You lost, and we still hearing him? I can't hear him. You lost your mic, Dan.
Yeah, I can't hear him.
It just went out. Did something come unplugged? It shows that your mic's on, but we can't hear you.
I think he's saying you're doing a great job, Andy.
I think, I think the meeting's going to go a little bit faster now.
And Dan, do you want to call on your phone, Dan? Uh, you don't need my technical help. I'm just.
Do you want to resume? Do any other select want Peter to resume the meeting until Danny gets back on?
Tiffany, do you want to wait?
No, that's fine.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, Andy. Let's keep going.
Okay, well, Dan tries to figure out his technical difficulties. If we're done with the charter revision conversation, we could move on to the next item, which is discuss, and it's perfect timing, discuss, uh, resuming of in-person meetings and hybrid media rooms. The board cycle will discuss resuming in-person board of select meetings. And the town manager will provide a status update on creating a hybrid, uh, meeting environment. Or actually, Donna will. But, um, so with that, I know there's been some conversation that's been brought up at some of these, some of these other meetings, I think, or I would hope, and this is a suggestion, and that's all I do is suggest to the board, that you guys come up with, uh, a conclusion and a direction on how to move forward. And then we, we stay that course, however you decide for at least, I would suggest till the new board is in place. Either way, uh, and we'll continue to work on this hybrid meeting environment, but that, that's something that's taken a little bit of time. It's not like we're just not looking into that. We, but I'm not going to make excuses, but, um, I can also defer that to Donna. Donna was kind of, she was spearheading that. And I was, uh, with our other librarian who went off, uh, family medical leave and then decided to leave us. So we kind of had a little delay in it, but we're back up and running and we're moving forward with that. But it's, it's, uh, it's, it's not like just going down to, um, Pep Boys and buying some equipment, hooking it up. There's a lot that goes into this. So we're working on it with a couple of different companies. And we're actually taking a field trip out to Putnam, I think, next week, and look at, uh, some stuff that was installed by the company. We're considering and see how that works and see if that's going to fit our venue. But Donna, did you want to try to jump in and, or did I cover it?
I think you covered, um, I think you covered it all. We are looking to make these hybrid meeting rooms at the town office building meeting room and at the library in the community room. So we, um, we do have proposed in front of us, we're working with, um, ESC and Novus. We will be going out, Matt Bordeaux and I will be going out to Putnam on the thirty-first. They have a newly um, constructed town hall with this equipment. And, uh, we're going to be looking at that. They said they will be happy to share what they wish they had done differently and what works for them. Um, and then hopefully soon thereafter, we'll be able to, you know, finalize the work. One thing we have learned, at least with the proposal that we have in front of us now, is that it's going to include more manpower. So at the meetings, there will need to be a designated staff member to operate this. And we want to make sure that that is something that will work for us. Um, we don't want to install and spend a lot of money and install equipment that is not going to do what we want it to do. So more to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's that?
Okay.
Dan, can you, are you back with your audio?
I'm on my phone.
We could hear you.
So.
Yeah.
I think the thing, if I can jump in, I think I, I really appreciate all the work you're doing. And clearly, you know, Tiffany's been a proponent of in-person. And I know Mark and I talked about a, a hybrid. Uh, you know, and I personally, you know, speak for Mark, but our participation is much higher this way than in person. So I think a hybrid to me is, makes sense. So I'm just most interested in uh, the timing, you know, just to make sure we sort of keep this on the forefront, we have realistic, objective for timing. Uh, and, uh, so that's all. I, I don't want it to be open-ended. Again, I just want to make sure we move this forward. So I appreciate all the work that you're doing, Donna and Andy on this. Thank you.
I just, uh, you can back off of Peter. You guys here, it seems to be a lot of background.
I believe that's because Danny's on two devices. That's why we're having an echo.
Okay. So you're hearing it too, Andy?
Yeah.
Better? Yeah, I think it's better. Um, do you guys have a number of this? Because I, I, it doesn't seem like it's going to be cheap. It also doesn't seem like it's going to be easy to put into circles. That is one, I think. I don't know, you know, how Danny and Tiffany feel because they're going to be staying on. Peter, I hope you run again and win. I won't be here. Um, I, I think we should take our time with this and explore it. Um, I'm glad you guys are going off to see somebody else doing it. It's always better to see what somebody else experienced instead of making a, a mistake because we haven't done our homework. Uh, I, I wouldn't mind waiting to gather more information and leave it to the, the new slate coming in.
Um, so it was my understanding, and then I have a comment I want to make several actually about this topic, especially given two meetings in a row with technical difficulties now, was my understanding that ARPA funds were set aside to pursue this hybrid meeting environment, correct, in round one?
Absolutely.
Correct. So that's where the funding is coming from, Mark. I believe like way back in round one, we had approved a whole bunch of, I forget what the amount was, but that's where the money is coming from, that we wanted to make the advancement with ARPA to do a hybrid meeting environment.
Yeah, to the tune of over seventy thousand dollars. And we, we initiated that. And we started working with our IT people along with ESC. We had them come in, look at the buildings, give us quotes. And then we had put a committee together, including the librarian, and we were moving forward. Then unfortunately, we had a little bit of a, a delay because of his departure. And we are still, uh, looking at it with IT. And you can see there's a little field trip on the thirty-first.
So, um, I just want to say that, you know, I'm not necessarily unopposed to a hybrid meeting environment. I think a lot of towns are moving in that direction. But frankly, I think we're an outlier to continue to not meet in person. And I think if we look at the DPW survey, and a lot of that feedback was about rebuilding trust in town government. By continuing to not be willing to meet in person, I feel personally sends a message that we're not willing to stand in front of the people and conduct business. There is a difference between conducting business in person and conducting business virtually. You're beholden to technology. You're beholden to things going wrong, like two weeks ago, when nobody had their video cameras on. Um, I think that if multiple people are taking the time in a survey about a public works facility to call out the board of selectmen for not meeting in person three years after COVID first hit, I think it would be a dereliction of duty to not respond to that. So I don't know why we can't consider until the hybrid meeting environment is set up to have one of our bi-monthly meetings in person and the other virtually. I think then we're being responsive to people who indicate that this is a problem for them, and we don't lose the attendance on the other side for people who can attend. I'd also like to say that we could probably look into. I don't know, you could probably look at YouTube. I know there's a lot of ways that you can stream meetings on YouTube that might be a little bit easier than Facebook, which I know we do currently. But there are options. And I think it's rather telling that people took the time out in a survey about a building to talk about the fact that we're not meeting in person. I think we're an outlier, and I think we need to address that. Thank you.
If I may, if I'm back on.
You are.
Okay. Everybody I've talked to, both young and old, love the fact that they don't have to go to a meeting, they don't have to worry about going out in inclement weather. They don't have to worry about packing the kids up. They don't have to worry about any of that kind of stuff. And virtually all the people I've talked to love this format. So I'm not inclined at this point in time to change it. Maybe after the new board gets sworn in in November, it can get readdressed. But at this point, I'm not ready to support changing myself. So.
I'd like to make a comment too, Dan.
Sure.
I I agree with Dan. Most of the feedback that I've received is that people like this format. I can remember the days when we first started and we'd have two people at a meeting. To say that somehow we're conveying a message that we're afraid to confront the public or that somehow we're shirking our duties by not doing that. We all live in town. I I know you guys experience the same thing I do. No matter where I go, somebody comes up to me and starts talking about the town, our business, things they're concerned about. I I've never felt that that we were somehow derelict our duties as selectmen. I I also support what Dan said. I I think we ought to wait till the next slate comes in and then bring it up again.
Peter?
I don't have any problem continuing to to research because it sounds like we'll need the time to research it anyway. I don't necessarily think we need to wait. I I do agree with what Mark said and Dan as well, in the sense that we have much better participation now than we ever did in person. Not suggesting that we shouldn't be in front of the public. I I am in front of the public right now, you know, through technology. So I'm happy to do it in person. But I think without a hybrid model, we will exclude a number of people. Yes, there were some comments on the survey. There were also there were also certain comments in the survey, which I won't comment on that. I'm, you know, don't aren't worthy of responding to. So I'm just saying that if you people are having trouble with this format, does not mean this format doesn't work. But I do understand Tiffany, your position about wanting to be in person, and I'm fine with being in person, but I would not be fine with being in person and eliminating the hybrid model. I I think we would.
That's not what I said. What I said was that I fully.
This is my opinion.
Hybrid environment.
This is my opinion. That's all.
I never said that, though. I want to be very clear about what I said, that I support a hybrid meeting environment at some point, but that what I would also support half in person, half in this format. I never said that I wouldn't support a hybrid meeting, and I want to be very clear about that.
That's fine. I I wouldn't support one without the other. So now to make sure I'm clear on that.
I think that's a fair solution, Tiffany. I I just don't know with with a whole new slate of selectmen coming in that you know, that that's something to decide right now with two months to go. But that's that's definitely a fair solution you offer to make make both sides happy, but to to side with Peter again. It's I I I remember those days, and we're going to lose a lot of participation and people who haven't been happy with this, this is my feeling that haven't been happy with saying we haven't been in person are people that disagree with the the decisions that we've made. And I've I've felt that by what people have said to me.
But could I have a show or a voice vote that we are expecting the town to move forward with working on that creation of a hybrid meeting environment, but at this time, we keep our our meetings as they are now? So I'll put that to a vote. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, no, solely on the second part. Thank you.
Okay. Peter?
All right, well, that I I agree to continue currently the way we are. Thank you.
Mark?
I agree also with continuing how we are.
Okay, and myself at this point in time, I I agree with keeping it the way things are. Okay. Next, we have any other old business? And I don't we don't have any other old business at this time that I can think of. Hearing none, moving forward with new business. The fiscal year 2022 State Homeland Security Grant Program, Region Three Memorandum of Agreement. Andy, did you want to briefly bring us up to speed on this? This is something I think we do all the time.
It is. So for the people that maybe knew or don't know about it, I'll read the narrative. So this is to approve the FFY 2002 State Homeland Security Grant Program for Region Three Memorandum of Agreement. This is agreement between the town and the state of emergency management, and this gives us funds which funds the emergency management director's position. So attached is a memorandum of agreement regarding use of federal fiscal year 2022 State Homeland Security Grant Funds and its custodial ownership of regional assets in DEMIS DM D E M H S, I am sorry, Region Three. This is an annual federal grant for which the town of Hebron, by way of this agreement, authorizes DESPP or DEMIS D E M H S to retain and to administer grant funds with CROG, providing financial and programmatic oversight. And then there's a proposed resolution for one of the trustee selectmen to read.
Okay, I'll read the resolution and then we can discuss it. Be a result that the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Environment Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate and be that it further resolved that Andrew J. Tierney, as town manager of the Town of Hebron, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. This authorization is for the fiscal year 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program. And my only question is that this is the proper year.
It's I know it's it's been delayed quite a while, but yes, the dates are correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
And?
Yes. Go ahead, Mark.
Obviously, this is something that's already taking place, and we have to respond to being compliant with whatever this is. But I I'm just curious to what the town spends, if there's money that's allocated for this. What homeland security program are we running, and what do we spend that money on as a town or a region?
Mark, so this is clearly the budget for the Emergency Management Director's Department.
Can I? It's Donna. Can I just jump in here for a second?
Sure.
Just to clarify, there's another grant coming up, the next item. The next item is for the financial grant for the support of the Emergency Management Director. This one that we're taking action on right now is the custodial agreement. This is for equipment that is purchased for the region. And that we we give authorization for them to use our grant money to purchase or maintain regional equipment. So this is just a memorandum of understanding between us and the state. The next grant that we're going to take action on next is the financial grant. And that will have some numbers in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good explanation, Donna, but I I still wonder what equipment have we bought, where is its central location? And how is it disseminated to be used in a time of an emergency? And does Andy play a part in coming to bat for Hebron to get whatever emergency equipment or services that we need?
So quickly, what this is, is it's federal money coming down through, so it doesn't normally funnel directly to the municipal. It goes through the CROG. So CROG is the entity that handles the money for Region Three. There's a Region Three coordinator from the state. They have tents, detox trailers and stuff like that. But that still would go through. We would put a request in through, you know, homeland security or national homeland security, but DEMIS, who Paul Bancroft, if we needed something for our town, and we would, it it works that way. But the agreement, in order to get the money through the to the CROG or for the CROG, be able to use it on the Region Three equipment, is we have to have an agreement giving them permission to do that. And that Donna is right, we have we have two back to backs. So I I didn't quite explain that first one correctly. So thank you, Donna.
All right, now now I got it, Andy. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
You, Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. The next one, this is the one that actually affects the director himself, I believe. Andy, do you want to go through this one?
Yeah, so this is AB. This is approved emergency management performance grant application. Attached is a copy of the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Emergency Management Performance Grant Application for the period of October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2023. This is an annual grant application which provides funding for the emergency management operations of the Town of Hebron. And there's a proposed motion beneath.
Okay, resolved that the Town of Hebron may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary, appropriate, and further resolve that Andrew J. Tierney, as town manager of the Town of Hebron, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Hebron and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. This authorization is for the EMPG grant for the performance period of October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2023 in the amount of $5,475 with a local match of $5,475. And again, anybody or any questions on this? The the paperwork in the back of it kind of gives some of the other information too. But whenever we do storm-related or emergency management calls out its personnel, these are the grants that actually help that entity to do their jobs. And again, whether it's radio support, vehicle support, you know, emergency trailers, things like that. That's what these two grants cover. A few years ago, I could have given you a lot better description of all that's done because I I went through all this back when I was Emergency Management Director a lot of years ago now. But but this is the monies that help that agency perform. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
You, Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next would be our draft agenda. Now, this is for September 7. As we were alluding to earlier, historically, this is the Thursday, the first night of the Hebron Harvest Fair. Historically, we have canceled this meeting. I'll open it up to the body. What do you want to do? Somebody? Anybody?
Since I probably have to work it, Dan. I I'm in favor of of canceling that particular meeting unless we have something that's really pressing.
Well, again, if we have something that's really pressing, whether or not you want to try to meet on that night, I don't know, but we could always call a special meeting as as is allowed by statute. It would only be for whatever that meeting was called for. That's the only thing with a special meeting. So if something did come up that required immediate action, we could always go that avenue.
That's why you guys that's why you guys appointed the librarian tonight. We kind of rushed that. And I don't like to rush things, but that was anticipation of this next meeting getting canceled. So at this point in time, that was the only thing that we had that was pressing. I don't know of anything else.
Yeah, Tiffany?
I'll go along with the will of the board. I don't have an opinion one way or the other.
Okay, Peter?
It's fine with me.
And historically, yeah, now that I'm not the deputy fire marshal anymore, I don't have to be there, but I I don't it it's historically, we've always canceled this meeting in all the years that I've been involved. So I would I would state that the seems like the will of of the Board of Selectmen is that this meeting get canceled and these items get put onto the September 21st meeting unless something comes up that would require a special meeting. Do we need to do any more on an action on that? Cool. Okay. And of course, if anybody has anything else that they want to add on to the that following meeting, just get it into town staff so that can get addressed. Our next item would be our can the approval of the minutes of August 3, 2023, the regular meeting, and then the tax refunds as listed. Did anybody need any discussion on the minutes? Did anybody read them? Everybody happy with them? All in favor of approval of the August 3, 2023 regular meeting and the tax refunds as listed, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye. Tiffany Tealee, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh, Peter?
You Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next thing would be our liaison reports. Uh, Tiffany?
I unfortunately don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, you are welcome. Thank you. Uh, Mark?
Uh, just an update on, um, active shooter training and RAM and what we're doing. We just had a huge, uh, active shooter training at LS Tech where state and our local, um, officers got together from Marvone Hebron. It's one of the best trainings I've been to in quite some time. Uh, students from LS Tech actually made it as realistic as, as I've seen any of these trainings. They volunteered to, uh, play the role of victims. They volunteered to play the role of students running out and trying to make this as realistic as possible. And in our debriefing of it, the students said that they felt so much more comfortable knowing that this is what the police do and we're coming to get them. And a lot of the young people said that they were inspired even, um, pursue a, a, a career in law enforcement. And there's a huge shortage of officers. There's even towns offering bonuses from 10 to $20,000 just for somebody to, um, apply for the job. So that was really rewarding and I keep feeling better about Hebron and our preparedness as we keep moving forward. And I want to thank the other selectmen for being supportive of using ARPA funds to make us as ready as we can be.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peter?
Parks and Rec Commission Matt and, uh, this week, and just continue to discuss, uh, Dog Park research, uh, that, that's being done and as well as prioritization associated with, uh, the number of ARPA projects that they have put forward. So there was discussion on the ARPA projects. And they are also making, um, some changes to their open space policies, parks and open space policies in general. So they're updating some of their documents as well. And, um, from a board of finance perspective, uh, I don't know, I see our chair is on. Uh, Diane, can you hear me or do you want to provide anything? I'll defer to her. I hate to have her not participate when I see her here. If she wants to add anything associated with the board of finance, I don't know if Diane, uh, can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay. Is there anything you wish to, to add in terms of, uh, on the board of finance for the board? Thank you for joining us, by the way.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for having me. Um, just wanted to let you know, um, I'm just looking through my notes from the last meeting. Um, I think the uh, town staff is busy closing out, uh, the June 30th meeting and getting started with the new year. And so they've been, you know, they've been busy with auditors and setting up the new year. Um, we were interested in, um, understanding if you got, if the board of selectmen have put together um, something in writing regarding the ARPA um, allocated funds. And, and I know that you were talking about this earlier in the meeting, um, that, that we thought that it might be helpful if we, if, you know, you guys had something to guide you um, in review of projects, like the overage under, and, you know, what's over, what's under and, um, how to move forward because there were certain projects that were coming in, you know, higher than what was expected. Um, so that was something that we had asked Elaine to talk to Andy about. And if you were, if you didn't have anything in writing, if you wanted us to maybe help put something together that might be considered, um, for basically a procedure of, uh, maybe what we would look at, we collectively, you know, being the board of selectmen, not, not me, but, um, so that you could determine whether you would move forward with a project or not, if it didn't really come in at what was expected. And if you would come to the town for, um, a special appropriation or some other, um, action. So that was something that we definitely wanted some more information on. And let's see, um, we also were working on a, um, request, um, request of information to the board of education based on their, on the prior budget period to understand, uh, the process that they used, the documents that they used for decision-making, where they ended up, uh, basically, uh, they're, you know, they had requested over 14% increase and ultimately that's not what was passed. So we're looking to see what the opening balances are for GL and their, um, um, for their ex, their budgeted expenditures for the 2023, 2024 period. Um, and I sent that request over to them last week. There are four members of the board of, of board of finance that signed that, were signed that were in the last meeting. It does not have one person's name on there because I was not able to touch base with him um, prior to sending it and was not, and he was not in the meeting. So, um, that was the reason why I didn't sign his name. But anyway, we're just looking for more information on what has, what has transpired since the budget passed. Um, we are hearing through other, other sources that there were a couple of large increases to the superintendent's salary and to the business manager's salary. And I think that that, those might have been made after the budget was passed. And we're trying to get to, uh, an understanding of what those were too. Um, and so if they were greater than 3%, we were looking for any input that they used. If they used a salary survey, um, of, you know, like positions in area towns or other towns like, uh, Hebron. We asked for that information as well. So just wanted you to know that that was out there. And, uh, that's it for now.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Hebrew Historic Properties Commission did meet the other night. Uh, they actually had the people of code, uh, going through the Peters house. Uh, also I believe the town did get for you, Peter, and I think it went out to everyone, uh, monies that have been spent on that structure with some explanation. I, they've also brought a couple of, of, uh, specialist, uh, engineer type specialists to look at some of the other things that need to be addressed with that. Um, the other thing that's, that's going on that they're trying to, uh, get to fruition is the Gulf Schoolhouse roof. Uh, that contract has been awarded, has been signed, but at this point in time, the work has not started. And the tarp that's covering the roof on that building, quite literally is about two thirds ripped off. Um, so hopefully that, that person will be, uh, getting busy on getting that roof repaired. Other than that, uh, you know, a number of different issues, working with Matt on, on, um, other issues in the center of town. Matt's talking about some of the, uh, steep grant monies that are being applied for and what he would be hoping to, uh, have those, those dollars addressed, uh, which would also involve the Hebron Historic Properties Commission, um, as it involves the, uh, Town Center Green and some of those areas. Um, Fire Department, since they really don't have a corporation anymore, um, no meet, no, uh, report. So I believe that's everybody. Our next section again would be public comment.
Hey, Dan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I just, I think it's important. I know we're going to move this along, but we have our, our town planner with us and I think we should acknowledge, right, the grant we just received.
Oh, okay. Yes, please.
So Matt, if you want to give a quick, uh, preview about the, the community grant that we just received or the town of Hebron received?
Uh, can you see me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes. You're coming in there, you are.
Yeah, I got the wrong camera on, so I'm not getting, uh,
There you are.
Good visual here, but as long as you can see me or hear me. Um, thank you. Uh, so this is Matt Bordeaux, town planner. Um, yeah, Andy just asked me to give a brief explanation of the grant that, um, I think you all were notified that we were awarded recently for the Connecticut Communities Challenge Program. Uh, that's a, uh, collaboration we'll be undertaking with the, um, Commons Community Development Corp., which is, um, a nonprofit group that grew out of the St. Peters Congregation and other, um, you know, other team members, um, design professionals and, um, housing management folks of, of that nature. Um, essentially, you know, as Common CDC continues to pursue, um, uh, let's see, you know, pursue their housing project at 60 Church Street that they've, you know, explained to you in the past or described, you know, conceptually in the past. Um, one of the hurdles, you know, facing that project is the access to water. Uh, currently, you know, Connecticut Water Company had declined their project. Um, there was too many units for the, uh, Hebron Center project or Hebron Center system to support. So, um, this grant will make the opportunity for, um, Common CDC in the town to pursue additional dwell, um, you know, drilling well opportunities on the St. Peters Church property. It's our hope, and again, this is yet to be determined once we get in the ground and, and, and get at least a minimum one test drill or one, one test well in the ground and see what kind of yield is returned. The idea would be that there would be wells to support the project and community wells that would be returned to the Hebron Center system that could potentially be utilized for additional, um, development throughout the center of town that's, uh, within that, you know, that system. Um, again, the Connecticut Water Company is a partner. They are the exclusive service area provider uh, for the Hebron Center system. So because these wells would be, um, theoretically drilled within proximity of the system, uh, they ultimately have the say in whether or not that water should be contributed toward that, you know, towards the town's, uh, public system. So, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress because again, we will not know how successful, um, the project can be until we have some, um, returns on, uh, some initial test wells to determine how much water is available. But, uh, you know, it's, it's obviously a big, a big reward or award and, um, we're very hopeful that, um, it could really bring to fruition the project to 60 Church Street and hopefully support some additional development in town.
Uh, I have a question, Matt. We have received this, uh, grant. How quickly now can, uh, well drillers be brought in to actually see if in fact the water that, uh, a couple of, of people have said they think is there is? What steps have to be taken?
Yeah, you know, so all we've heard so far from D E C D is that we received the award. Um, so the details of how we move forward, I think are going to be somewhat sensitive. Working at, uh, with a, with a grant at this scale, there's going to be a lot of, um, requirements in terms of how we bid the project and who we rewarded to, um, or awarded to. Uh, however, I know that St. Peters or, or St. Peters, I say that because these, these wells will be drilled in their land, but generally the Common CDC group, um, will be moving forward with some test wells, um, in the very near future. They have a location identified. They've drafted a plan. Um, they've got some support, um, uh, from some local, uh, local contracting groups to do a little bit of clearing, to have a pad available for, um, equipment to access the site. Um, so they're more or less ready to go now. There's a couple of steps they need to meet with the Chatham Health District. Um, they'll need, need to make an application for a non-water supply well because this will be a test well. And, you know, another step they need to satisfy somewhere along the line is to pursue a well exception uh, from the kid, the Connecticut Department of, uh, Public Health. Because again, they are within the public water supply, um, service area. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, with some of these permits, it, it does, it does take time. Um, so unfortunately I would not say it's imminent, but, um, at, at a minimum, the test well I think could happen within, you know, maximum two months, I would, I would say would be a, a conservative guess.
Perfect. Thank you. Like, does anybody have any other questions for Matt? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, Andy, anything else?
No, now you can go back to, uh,
Okay, you, uh, you have nothing for Chatham Health or anything?
No, Russ just got back from vacation. Um, I'm meeting next, we're meeting next week.
Okay. Well, with that, I believe our next section would be our public comment. Um, Donna?
Yes, first up for public comment is Kate Hershey.
Okay, Caitlin?
Hi, everyone. I mean, you probably saw this coming. I am here again, uh, speaking as a resident because we've not formally met as the Green Committee, um, since, uh, your last meeting. Um, but at the August 3rd Board of Selectman meeting, Chairman Larson said that the state came in, did their inspections, and as it was recorded by, I believe, the Green Committee, that we were in violation. I guess we were actually not. Um, with all due respect, that statement is incorrect. Um, first, if you visit hebrongoesgreen.com backslash DPW, which is where we had posted our letter, um, and I can put that into the chat after. Um, you'll notice at the bottom of the page, there are two documents. Um, these deep reports from December 2022 clearly outline 14 insufficiencies with Hebron's MS4 permit. And those are the documents that we had sourced when we were discussing the non-compliance in our, um, our DPW letter. So straight off the bat, you know, we're, we're having some miscommunications here. Um, second, uh, you had talked about the state coming in to do their inspections. I'm not sure if you were thinking of the timeline when you made that statement, but, um, those inspections actually happened after our letter was submitted. Um, so we were using the information that we had at the time, um, when we were drafting our letter, which was, uh, the deep letter with 14 insufficiencies. So if you were referring to that inspection, not to get totally off topic, um, but though reports from that visit are also pretty black and white. Um, the MS4 report again notes a handful of insufficiencies and the Stormwater General Report specifically says under number 20 that we remarked as having minor violations. Um, the reasons range on both reports from housekeeping to larger systemic issues. Um, and some of them are obviously easier to fix than others. But the bottom line is whether we were talking about what is reflected in the letter or the latest visit from deep, um, Hebron still has work to be done to be considered in compliance. And I just wanted to make note of that since the Green Committee was incorrectly mentioned in Chairman Larson's statement. Thank you.
Good.
And next up is Terry McManus.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. Um, earlier today, Tiffany, I was glad to see that, um, you had read the comments section and taken a look at other things other than the, uh, the role of, one of the, we need to get that taken care of. Okay, thank you. One of the other things, and, uh, lost my train of thought, but I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for agreeing to release the total report minus the personal details. I think that's extremely. I think that's extremely important. One of the things I noticed um starkly were the comments when it came to cost. And sixty six point six six or sixty five point six six percent of the people wanted the property not to have the DPW as a major concern. Sixty five point three three percent of the people said that they were really concerned about the cost. Within the comments section, there was a lot of talk about taxes being too high. I'm glad to see that there's a lot of aspiring politicians here. And that they're starting to do their homework as far as how this has been going forward. That I urge you, once this is released, if you haven't already read the comments, to read through this document because I believe it will give you some good input as to what to do in the future. With Ram having transferred retired two point five million dollars of debt and transferred that cost over into their uh salary and benefits line items. And after during that two years, still end up with a six percent increase in their total budget. That's an extraordinary change of revenues, um, obfuscation revenues. And as has been outlined right now, there's a Freedom of Information Act on the elementary school budgeting. And within the town itself, people are angry about the way we're spending our money. Earlier, I made a comment on open space. My concern is not open space. It's a beautiful thing. I love it. My concern is is our books are out of balance. And there's a lot of data out there that this survey is giving us. I urge all to read it. And I urge us to try and figure out how, even though we want everything, we're not going to be able to get everything. We start to need, we need to start working together. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this time.
Thank you, sir.
And next up is Claudia Riley.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Wonderful. So I just want to um make some comments very quickly. This is in respect to uh potential future plans for moving the um Board of Selectmen meetings virtual or a hybrid or a combination of. I am in support, great support actually, of having the option of the meetings being hybrid for a number of reasons. One being clearly the technology and really any platform that is used, whether it's GoTo, whether it's Teams, whether it's Zoom, uh, the technology isn't really there. There's a lot of glitches. Um, there's Wi-Fi issues, there's echoing, et cetera. So at times, it's very difficult to hear what people have to say. Uh, especially during the public comment period. I think it's critical that folk that are wanting to um submit public comment be heard clearly. In addition to that, there's a lot of very important uh issues that are being discussed throughout the times of the meetings. Want to make sure that our uh elected officials are being heard clearly, that there's no misinterpretation, et cetera. The second thing I think that we lose when we just have virtual meetings is the impact. So uh, you know, anything from tone to uh what's being said, et cetera, can be misinterpreted sometimes. So we want to make sure that we have the in-person option because really in-person meetings is really the best way uh to uh effectively communicate with the public and within the Board of Selectmen meetings. Uh, and thirdly, honestly, um, with respect to just the idea of governance, I mean, the idea of governance is that elected officials do have contact with the public. The public voted for you, the public supports you, and the expectation is is that the public wants to hear from you um not just in the screen. Um, I know that uh we are very used to having virtual meetings. If we are in a virtual meeting environment with our work, et cetera, but we we have to move to a to a hybrid option. It's very important for for us to do that, and I would strongly urge the Board of Selectmen to um pursue a hybrid option in the actually in the very near near future, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Amy DiMario is up next.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment um about the two point one million dollar grant that was issued to the or awarded to the town of Hebron. Um, I wanted to take a moment to thank Matt, the town planner um for his um exceptional collaboration with um the outside entities, whether it be with the Common CDC or with Code or with other um entities. He's done an exceptional job being really um collaborative, working hard together um to make these kinds of opportunities a reality for the town of Hebron. And I just I want to make that known and um say thank you. He's done a great job.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment? Hearing none? Well, I'm sorry. Yes.
No, I was just gonna say, I believe that's it. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So with that, uh, I mostly we move into executive session for the uh items of land acquisition. I believe there's three pieces. Uh, I I wrote down I St. Peters Property Abbey Drive, and I believe there's a third one.
There's a parcel um down on Church Street, uh, abutting Savvy Brothers.
Okay, so uh with that, everyone all set?
May I ask a question in the process, please? Will will you be reporting? Will you be reporting out of executive session tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so how would I join that?
When we are all done, uh, Donna, did you want to explain it? But uh
If there's any action taken, they'll come out and take action. Uh, and that we've done in a public setting, and it'll the the recording will be turned back on. You can either hang out and wait, or you can watch the the video once we post it up on the website.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, um, with that, wait for Donna to uh
Danny?
Do her math. Yes.
I hate to keep doing things. I'm sorry to interrupt. You you're gonna need to invite in myself and the town planner when you make that motion to go into executive session.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify. So make the motion that we move into executive session and bring in Matt Bordeaux, our town planner, Andy Tierney, the town manager. Okay, with everyone with everyone? Okay, so we will wait for Donna to tell us that we are all set.
I think you need to take the vote.
Okay, uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye.